Hey, team.
Just unmuted.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh my god, look at that. Looks like a movie.
She's, she's gonna have-
You got the sun behind you, Beth. It's beautiful.
The what?
The sun is behind you.
It's beating behind you.
I know. I'm in a, I don't, I'm in a hotel room and I'm trying to make it not look like a hotel room, but it totally is. Um, but like, I didn't, it felt weird to like have the bed in the background, so I blurred the background, but it makes me look like odd. I look odd. Anyway, I'm really sorry I'm not there. I hate Zoom, being on Zoom. Hate it.
Yeah, me too. That's my life every day, so.
Ah.
For ya.
Um.
Thank you for bopping in.
Yes, bopping in from Springfield, Massachusetts.
Can I ask why you're so frequently in Springfield specifically?
Because I run a high school out here, my friend.
Okay, that's one of your places. Okay, very good. I know you're a super, but I didn't know you reached out that far.
Yeah, this is better. Yeah, we are the only ninety mile public school system in the all ed system in Massachusetts. And so, um, and we're actually the, the only one of that distance still standing, actually, in, in that, in that.
Make sure nobody's leaving a voicemail when you're talking to them.
Uh, yeah, true.
Yeah, but dials.
Oh.
Uh, so, yeah, so I'm all the way out here and I, oh my god, I just got it. I just got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, things are not good here in the, uh, in the district system. They're not good at all.
Do you hear your voicemail? Picked up what he was saying? Just derogatory about school community or like?
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, it was real bad, real, real bad. And it's actually interesting.
Who's gonna retire in two weeks or something?
Uh, yeah, he was gonna retire, uh, the other June, but still.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is that real, you know, they're just that little get interview. You give forty-eight years or something and then one stupid mistake like that.
No, and what's awful is I've worked with Dan Warwick and he's, he's a great guy. He's actually a good, he's a good-
Yeah, I've known him for twenty years.
I'm sure you have. I've known him for ten and he's try, you know, like, and I understand why he's frustrated. The situation out here is terrible. It's terrible, um, in terms of, um, like, just the, not any particular person, but like, the, just, it's, oh, it's been rough getting to this superintendent decision. So I feel grateful for Nahhan and where we've been able to like get to, you know, the transition between Tony and Rob. It definitely makes me feel grateful for that. Um, and it shouldn't have to be this way. I mean, you know, it's that way in a lot of places. So anyway, I'm sorry though that I'm, I'm out here. We had our graduation today and it was fabulous, but I couldn't make it back, um, quickly.
No worries. Thank you for being here. So let's call this meeting in the winter at seven oh six P M.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by the nation under God, indivisible, infinite,
Please, everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, the twenty eighth May. And if so, if there are no edits, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from, uh, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do not believe we have any visitors.
We do. We do. We have, um, Ms. Benaro.
There. Does anyone have any correspondence?
I, I do.
We share.
I have input. Um, I have input that was, um, told to me with permission, uh, informally by Debbie Uzadegui. Is that how you pronounce her name?
Uzadegui.
Uzadegui. Who's got to key. And she brought up something really interesting that I wanted to alert us to, which is that when the seventh grader, so our students are seventh graders at Swamp Scott Middle School and the National Honor Society, uh, makes decisions about National Honor Society membership or pomp and circumstance or something in seventh grade, but they use what happens in sixth grade as a determiner for your membership in seventh grade. And so she is, she said the hot kids are actually behind unless they are on top of National Honor Society things happening uh, in their sixth grade year. And, um, with our sixth grade being safe in Nahhat right now, um, then that would bear on them. So her recommendation, and I thought it was a good one, is that, um, Swamp Scott and Nahhat should collaborate around National Honor Society specifically and look at places where our sixth grade should start doing the service projects and some of the, um, the work that they should do so that when they get to seventh grade, they can be elected in to the National Honor Society.
That is very good feedback. And I do think that we, we need to look at, um, more closely aligning curricula, especially in grade six.
Yeah, I wanted to put it on like just Kevin, your radar, Mr. Andrews, your radar, and Mr. Lebo's radar, um, just maybe for the future.
Yeah, uh, no, no maiden, uh, maiden, Ms. Anderson.
Great. I thought it was a good suggestion from, um, uh, Ms. Uzadegui.
Has anyone else received mutual correspondence?
Just more about concerns for next year in regards to the after-school program, but I kind of just felt the same, what, that we're working on. And that the solution will be in place by the time.
Right. Yeah, I can just, uh, confirm that, you know, we've had two clients come, two potential folks who run a program here and if they do not decide to run a program, Nahhat Public Schools would pick up the role.
Is there a timeline for them to get back to you?
You know, I'll be following up them shortly. Uh, this is the time for that, so I would think before the end of July, we'd have a proposal. I mean, I'm sorry, before the end of June, in my expectation, and I'll follow up with them.
So if there's no further community input that people have received, let's move on to the examination and operation of human inputs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet labeled item, agenda item five, you have bills totaling seventy-one thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and forty-six cents. They are the typical bills of, uh, power, uh, gas, exterminator, our food service for our lunches, uh, including stop and shop. We had an elevator bill for an inspection. We have special education, uh, fees to our out-of-district students, uh, special education transportation. Uh, we had an equipment repair, Amazon for a variety of things. Uh, the Easter seals is an out-of-district payment for a specialized program. We had a plumber's, um, bill. I would want to spend a little bit of time on that. Uh, that's on the second page, fifth one down. Uh, Amante is the plumber who takes care of our HVAC. The interesting thing, um, and if I, if I told you this before, stop me, because I don't think I have. If you remember, we had a leak and we had damage and we had an insurance claim. Uh, the plumber who repaired the piece that broke said that all of the new wing had keep, uh, corners, elbows in, in the units, in the, uh, univans that they thought were, uh, inferior quality. So, uh, so that that won't happen again, uh, I authorized a purchase of fifty elbows and he came in and replaced all of them. Um, I think we may have to go a little bit further, uh, down the road. I think there's two u, two elbows in each unit, so that would be twenty-five. So we either have spares or, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Vinnie about whether or not this summer there are any others that need replacing. So that was preventive maintenance so that we won't have another failure. Interestingly, that the units put in in the two thousand six, seven have a weak elbow whereas the ones in the older building that were put in many years ago don't, uh, probably not uncommon. Uh, there is a, a two thousand dollar bill for Brendel Christian. She does our, our, our psych evaluations for special education. And, um, that's about it. So Madam Chair, with your permission, I would, uh, respectfully ask a member of the school committee to make a motion to approve seventy-one thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and forty-six cents.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the expenditure of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and forty-six cents.
One second. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to the superintendent's report, principal's report is first up.
Madam Chair, uh, before we begin, I have been thinking about your agenda for the future. So the first item on the superintendent's report is the principal's report. That seems awkward to me.
I've always thought so.
But the principal's report is not on your agenda, which as you know, is part of your policy manual. Yeah, so I think perhaps in the future, um, the new superintendent and you, Madam Chair, and your members could consider amending the policy that has the agenda and make the principal's report its own argument.
Question.
Yeah, thank you.
With that said.
Thank you for your, your considerations for hand parentalizing. And, uh, with that, my principal's report, uh, starts out with students, families, and community. We had a wonderful participation in the Memorial Day Parade. A lovely overcast sky kept the kids cool and provided a nice backdrop for the marching. Um, as you know, we don't have a graduating class, but I'm happy to say that every student in the sixth grade, I mean, in the rising sixth grade, in the current fifth grade participated either as flagbearers or as, uh, band members. And, uh, we had a wonderful performance by the, uh, jump school band during the parade. And we also had a wonderful recitation of the Daysburg Address at the Green Lawn Cemetery. Uh, it was a group recitation. We had alumni from previous years organized by Julie Tarmy. And so we had students going back ten years that had recited before, joined all of our fourth and fifth graders in this, uh, tradition. And so we could carry on the tradition of having fourth and fifth graders recite. Uh, and next year we'll re, return to our regular competition for the, the best recitation to be the person that recites the Daysburg. But this, this year we had, um, all the students recited together with alumni, which is wonderful. And I want to thank, uh, Ms. Tarmy for organizing that event. Uh, we also had Zavi Uzadegui declare the day, uh, on behalf of the governor. And he read the res, he read the declaration for Memorial Day. Uh, we've also been working with the emergency management team and the Nahhat Police Department to install a space for management of materials so that in the event that we need our space for, uh, shelter for, for staff or students or residents, as you know, our cafeteria and library are the primary spaces for emergencies. And we've had people stay there for over, you know, for two nights, uh, in the past. So now instead of having a trailer, we have space in the building where all the bedding, food, uh, and other emergency supplies are stored. So we're ready for that and we're happy to host that. Um, I didn't add this, but Scoop's night was a great success. I want to thank, thank PTO for putting it on. They did a great job, uh, in pulling together hot dogs, slush, and the staff did a nice job of getting the rec, building ready and sharing the students', uh, work that happened over the school year. In the area of technology, we have iMac replacement hopefully going forward. The superintendent is still looking at final budget numbers, but we are hoping to have seventeen new desktop computers for the teachers. Uh, the current Macs are slowing. We've converted several to Chrome O S and so they will be still useful. Uh, but they cannot project. And so this, the iMacs that are connected to projectors will be hopefully replaced, uh, within this budget. But as the superintendent shared at our staff meeting today, if they're not done, uh, within this budget, they'll be done in stages over the coming school year uh, with the next budget. Uh, either way, the devices that are between six and eleven years old will be getting upgraded. So I want to thank the superintendent for his, uh, careful budgeting and hopefully, um, they'll get into the, into this fiscal year. In the area of curriculum instruction, today we had the Groover City Assembly. They were fantastic. They provided Afro-Brazilian drumming following our field day event. And it was a happy circumstance between the leader of this program, uh, Brazilian Beats was a former employee under the Somerville Public Schools, uh, the superintendent here, uh, hired him as a, a music director, a music teacher. And, um, and he was fabulous. Now, it was a coincidence, but a, a happy rejoining of, uh, two very skilled educators. And the kids really enjoyed it. Uh, would you like to share anything on that, superintendent?
He's a rock star. I met, um,
Marcus.
Marcus, uh, in two thousand and seven, when he first arrived on our shores, uh, from Brazil. And he had a great musical talent, um, raw, but, um, and we, uh, in Somerville, we were looking for an embodiment of multiculturalism. So the music, uh, director and I hired him to teach classes, uh, music classes and also to present. And, um, I hadn't seen him since, you know, two thousand and fifteen, when I left Somerville. And I had nothing to do with hiring him, which is kind of weird. I mean, I walked into the cafeteria, there he was. And he, he, he and I had the same reaction, oh my god. And he was very nice to me during the presentation. Uh, and he also explained to the kids, uh, how, um, he came to have his business and and, uh, how it has, uh, it's flourishing because, uh, someone gave him a break two thousand and seven. So it was, it was very nice. It was touching.
That's great. And, and part of the reason that we had him at the school is because this is a great opportunity to have diversity in the school. If you, if you, you know, have a hard time hiring a diverse staff, another opportunity is the arts and their presentations such as this. So, uh, I want to thank the Nahhat Education Foundation. They funded it fully, over a thousand dollars to have these three musicians come in. Uh, they had students drumming, students singing, you, moving music, and they had the teachers up there and myself as well dancing. So it was a great way to wrap up field day.
Mr. Andrews, what's the name of the group?
It's, um, the company's called Groover City and it's a diversity group and they are the Brazilian, uh, Brazilian beat makers. And so that was, Brazilian Beats was the name of their group. Uh, but the easiest way to find them on the web is through Groover City. And he taught us Portuguese, uh, through the program and just, it was just, it was fun. It was wonderful.
Sounds awesome.
Yep. He actually got the, the faculty to dance.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I, I was seriously saying that.
All of us, yeah, every one of us.
Yeah.
And I did it myself.
In a fun way, in a real fun way.
Yeah.
Yeah, engaging. Finally, uh, in, we have the, uh, kindergarten preschool screening took place recently. And as a reminder, we've, we've moved this from fall to now so that kindergarteners can start right off in the school year with the orientation day, then their first day of school. And that'll also allow the staff members, OT, speech, to start their services right off on the first day of school as well. To start their services right off on the first day of school as well. Uh, we had spoken about this before, about, you know, trying to have the kindergarten teachers come in before school started. And this was before school started. Uh, it was uh in June, June fourth and fifth. Uh, so those students have been screened, their parents will be notified if we think that we should look further into their needs, if they have any. And also our kindergarten teacher, Erin Morton, got a chance to meet all of the rising kindergarteners that are coming into the school that are registered. And so um, she met with nineteen of the twenty-one so far, and that'll get two more to, to grab uh out from the wild, as it were. And then down below, I have the dates that we've had. And uh, we hit field day today. It was wonderful. Roxanne Shannon did a great job putting the program together. Scott Bullock was the DJ. My Van was the DJ's backdrop and it all went up well.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
And then I also have a couple of uh news articles for you to review at your leisure. Uh, Ben Pierce covered my sharing of the school improvement plan from your last meeting. And then he also covered the safety group uh moving into our space. So that was wonderful. And then if you have the time tomorrow, uh, we'll, our field day will probably be covered as well. So lots of good press coverage, all positive for the young school.
Great. Moving on to facilities.
Madam Chair, if, if uh it's okay with you, I'd like to take the budget first and then back into the facilities, if I may. So in your packet, um, label item sixteen, you have the latest rendition of the uh fiscal twenty-four budget. It is uh as of May thirty-first. So um. The numbers people among you will note a couple of interesting things. Uh, we actually have more money left unspent. The available budget on page five. Is three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Which is actually uh almost twenty-three thousand dollars more than the available balance last time I reported. And that's because we have begun to transfer money. As I told you, we had about three hundred thousand dollars total, so we, we have begun to transfer that. So even though we spent more money, we have more left. Because we've been taking it from uh grants, we've been taking it from the circuit breaker. And we've been taking it from that state of money that uh I applied for in the winter. A hundred fifty-four thousand dollars to offset extraordinary expenses. So we, uh, we have six point seven percent of the bu- budget remaining. Which last time you saw it, it was six point two percent, so it's up a half a percent. The um percentage that we've spent without the Swanscott expenditure is just about the same, ten point five percent. Okay? So, the reason I wanted to, um, by the way, please stop me if you have any, any questions whatsoever. The reason I wanted to do that first is because that's the key element in the facilities expenditures that are coming up. So um, the first thing I want to do is uh piggyback on um. What the principal said in terms of our desktop computers. That would be about twenty-four thousand dollars for the seventeen desktop computers. Uh, they are some contained units, very similar to this one, obviously to, you know, upgraded multiple times over the years. Uh, we will then have seventeen old iMacs that we possibly could sell for a. Probably around a hundred bucks a piece, so that would knock that down by about seventeen hundred dollars. We're looking for a vendor who will sell us new ones and pay for. The old ones, but uh that's probably not going to be that uh easy. Uh, I reported to you before about the gym roof. We have a contractor ready to go. I'm, I have not signed that document yet. I'm still waiting to make sure we have the money. That's twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, so basically, we are going to be in the neighborhood of, of somewhere between forty-six and forty-eight thousand dollars. So if, once we pay all of our fiscal twenty-four bills, all the payroll is done. Um, if we have that in unspent funds, then I'll go forward with those. If not, I'll pass them to the next superintendent as um necessary items. But I think we're going to be okay. The third item is, uh, our copier, our big copier is seven years old. Uh, it has done, you know what I noticed? There was a zero missing from the reported. It's a hundred twenty thousand a month. That's well.
A hundred and, okay, well, yeah.
Well, you, you figure, you know, how many people we have using that machine. I mean, look at what I just did for a school committee meeting. There's.
Yeah.
You know, it's five hundred chains, yeah. So um. So it has multiple millions of copies made and it um, the last time it broke, I talked to the repairman. He said, uh, they can't get parts for it anymore, so we're living on borrowed time. Uh, yesterday, uh, Mr. Andrews met with the um, salesperson who is going to give us a proposal. Depending upon what comes back, uh, we'll either accept that or we'll get competitive proposals. Right now, we have a really good deal. Uh, we don't pay for any of the repairs, we don't pay for any of the toner, and we get. Multiple thousands of free copies a month, and then above that number, we pay. So um, we, we have a good deal. Because the toner for that machine is very expensive. It's the powder toner, you know. So um. Other than that, the facility is in good shape. Uh, we had one door problem uh since our last meeting and that was uh. Actually just a silly thing. The bar that locks the door, it unscrewed. The tip of it unscrewed from the bar and it was stuck inside the door, so, and that's been repaired. The other thing I want to bring you to your attention regarding facilities uh is something we're all very proud of. Um. Our, the member of the House, Peter Capano, and Brendan Creighton, our state senator. Were able to get a earmark for us in last year's budget of fifty thousand dollars for school safety. I am happy to report to you that as of an hour ago, I have spent. Forty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And I apologize for not being able to close the gap on that seventeen dollars and six cents, but. Um. And just to give you a real quick recap, because it's been a while. We uh put security film on all of the windows on the ground floor and around the offices and. That's a film that if somebody shoots a bullet through the window, it acts like a windshield. It chatters, but it holds. And they literally have to kick it out, which uh. The delay is somewhere between two and three minutes, which would get us time for the Naha Police Department to be. Uh, we have had a video upgrade, both in quantity of, of cameras on the outside of the building and also the quality. Um. We have had our firearm upgraded a little bit. And um. We have had new uh automatic door locks put in and all of the locks now on the outside of the building that are key. Are what they call a safety key system. Put the key in, unlock the door, when you pull your key in, it relocks. You don't have to remember to lock the door. Before uh the doors from two thousand six were set up, put your key in, unlock the door, pull the door. And you had to turn your key all the way around again to get the latch to come back out. Now it does it all automatically. Plus, we got three new electronic um handicap exit. Uh, entrance and exit systems put in. Uh, we put a new plate glass window in the reception area. Uh, that also, not only is it three eighths plate glass, but it also has the film on the inside to protect the uh office staff. Uh, we have new ballards and ballard covers outside and um. This is the latest thing, just got these. This is what we had now. Very utilitarian. So we've upgraded the information. These are our emergency flip charts. Um, we have seventy-seven of them. The school will literally never have to buy them again because of the way we had them designed. It's designed with a removable metal pin. And all of the categories. The flip chart categories are all on blank pages. So these are permanent. So let's say uh the state law changes about hostage abduction situations. So we have the sections, the section, all we have to do is reprint this. Punch two holes in it, make it to right length, and redo the book. And of course, I'll pass this around. It's a very substantial.
I've seen.
Useful. You are with this?
Um, we have them at the station floors. Just so we know.
You got the notice?
I don't, I've seen it. I have not.
I don't think you do, so we'll have to put that on our to-do list.
I have that one.
You have, you definitely have this.
But I've seen that. I don't know why I've seen it, but I have seen it.
How many do you uh think we, the station needs?
One.
Just one? Okay. So all that that I just talked about, um. Including making sure that our video cameras and the police station are connected. And firmly connected, unlike in the past when it was breaking down all the time. Is the forty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. For safety of our students, our staff and our visitors.
That's mine list. Oh, I think you have the minute from here.
I'm afraid to do that because then I'll lose the right date.
I think, I can check it out.
You know, my, I'm in handwriting, which I am happy to do. I'm just afraid I'm.
No, I guess.
Because I can't. Like that's.
It's Tyway anymore?
Yep.
I know, but I can't even, yeah, I can't scroll it up.
Yeah, we'll have Tyway take a look at it.
Maybe we can save the document.
Yeah, take. And if not, we'll re-craft. We're flexible.
So moving on to old business.
Uh, thank you. Madam Chair, the old business is the school committee policy manual update, and there is no update. Because we haven't gotten to it, we are going to, that's going to be a July item. Um, and have it ready uh in place uh on the website and um. The one thing I left out on the agenda for is I want your opinion of whether you actually want it to be printed. It's about four hundred and eighty pages.
Fine. I'm not a big fan of printing. But if it were to be, then there would be.
Uh. If it were printed, I would suggest consideration that the superintendent's office has a copy, the principal's office has a copy. Members of the school committee have a copy in case somebody contacts you at home and you want to look something up. Or the much more convenient thing to do probably is for us to post it on our website. Give everybody the exact location, you know, how to find it, you know, click on this and then this and then this, and not print it at all.
Uh, that would be my recommendation. And then you can send people a digitized version.
And if I have four hundred pages of copy at my house, if someone asks me a question, I'd be able to PDF, you know, do a search or something or call up the chat there.
Get that fine button. I, I know, it's just the paper.
That's what I thought, but of course, it's, it's your decision and uh. And it's one that is changeable. I mean, if down rogue, you want to print it, we'll have the PDF. Yeah, uh, and we'll have the Word document actually to print from. Okay?
So now moving to new business.
New business, thank you. Uh, first item is technology equipment for approval as surplus. Uh, under the guidance of Mr. Andrews, uh, Tyron Ng has gone through our technology equipment. And they have identified a variety of items. Um, by the way, if any of you want any of these, uh, you can put a bid in. Uh, these are basically um older items. Uh, I'm not even sure whether or not they are usable. But um, for consistent with mass general law. Because they were purchased with public funds, we can't just say, nobody wants these, we're going to get rid of them. So we have to go through a process. We place them on the state list for um items that are surplus and are for sale. And then we wait to see if anyone um puts a bid in. We have to leave it up two weeks before we take any uh action. Um, these items, we may get a little bit of money, somebody picking them up. Um, we did sell the antique printer cartridges we had.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And any money that we make goes to the town general fund. It doesn't stay with us. Okay? So Madam Chair, uh respectfully, I'd like a member of your committee to um simply. Make a motion to identify the items in this report as. Technology surplus.
Motion to identify the equipment in. Packet eight A surplus technology, with surplus.
Second, all in favor? Add one.
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna say, aye.
I'm here, I'm here.
Testing you.
Madam Chair, this is really the big item of the evening. It's um. C collaborative special education transportation agreement for approval in your packet. You have a document um signed by me, and if you noted, very large letters at the bottom. This was due uh before the end of May. So I noted to the C collaborative finance director, it must be approved by the school committee and will be presented on June eleventh for approval, which is this evening. I have the one uh ready to go without that statement that says. Approved by the hot school committee on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And I also ha- have uh Mr. Lebo's name as the contact person as the superintendent as of seven one twenty-four. This contract would go into effect on September first, two thousand twenty-four. And um. It's a recommendation of Mr. Lebo and myself that you approve this until August of two thousand thirty. Clearly, because of our size, it's an impediment to getting a competitive bid. For special education transportation. Uh, we do not have the number of students going out um. Out of district that would lead a bus company to give us a competitive bid. Which is why two years ago, I decided to uh enter into an agreement with the C collaborative. Who represents about sixteen school districts. We're the smallest, obviously. So um. The difference between this contract and any sign before it. Is that a year ago, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Started to allow the cost of transportation to be added to the cost for an out-of-district student. In order to get circuit breaker funds back. So concrete example. So concrete example, three years ago, if it, if a student was going to an out-of-district school for fifty thousand dollars and the uh circuit breaker threshold was forty-two thousand, which is about what it was. We could put in for eight thousand dollars worth of reimbursement. We would basically re- be reimbursed at about seventy-five percent, so we would get six thousand dollars. Now, if all of the numbers stayed the same, fifty thousand dollars for the out-of-district transportation. But let's say the, uh excuse me, for the out-of-district uh tuition. But let's say the transportation costs twenty thousand a year. We would put in for the fifty plus the twenty, or seventy thousand. So the amount of, of money that would be reimbursed would be not only the tuition, but the transportation too. So that's one major difference between this, because if you look at the numbers, you're going to say, whoa, numbers are going up, and they are. And both Mr. Lebo and I recommend that you agree to allow me to um join the SEAM Collaborative for six years. Special education transportation is one of those costs that are not covered by the competitive bidding guidelines of the Commonwealth Massachusetts. You don't have to get a competitive bid, and the reason for that is is our conundrum. You know, if you're a small district, nobody's going to bid on it. If you get somebody to do it, you just jump at it. This way, we are paying the same fees as the other sixteen districts. Was going to co-op? Yeah. The SEAM is a educational collaborative. So one of the services they give is they bid this contract for all of the districts that currently use them. So it doesn't cost us anything other than the um, the cost of um the established transportation. So the collaborative um gets their money from different means. They don't, you know, it's not like a van is uh three hundred and three dollars a day. And then because SEAM Collaborative um negotiated the contract, it's three-ten. That's not the way it is. Basically, all the SEAM Collaborative that did was get us all together, negotiate the contract. If there are issues with transportation, we go directly to the provider. We don't go through SEAM.
It's like a pooled insurance plan to make a change for everybody.
It's, it's a pooled plan, okay?
Motion to approve the agreement with uh the Special Education Transportation Contract Participation Agreement with SEAM Collaborative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to note that the copy that you have prepared doesn't have Nahon.
That's you mean this one?
Yeah.
The, the new one. You ready? That's correct. I thought if I wrote that in, it would be presumptuous.
So I just wanted to flag it, that's all.
So that's it. I, so I left something blank.
Fair enough.
I did all the hard stuff. And great, the finance director knows who we are, so, but it's a good pickup.
And I believe that you wanted to table, uh, I don't see.
That is correct. And I already took out of order. Unfortunately, I apologize, Madam Chair, the emergency response flip charts. It just made sense to do it all together.
So is there any other committee business? Does anyone have any announcements?
I do. I just, I just wanted to say, um Tony, I, this is my last meeting with you because I'll be abroad for our last meeting in June. And I wanted to say thank you for everything you've taught, you've brought to Nahon Public Schools. Uh went through the pandemic with you when I first came on school committee and um learned a lot from you as a mentor in different parts of my own life and just want to thank you for everything that you've brought to the school. It's been wonderful to work with you.
Thank you, you're very kind.
Beth, I hope you have a lovely time if I don't see you. Where you go away.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn this minute?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
We had seven forty-eight.
Our monster is rolling, huh?
Yeah, you have no idea. Our meetings usually go very late. This is like so weird. This has to be the biggest meeting ever.